I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this convention for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody, the mayor sends his salutations and he's unable to attend tonight, so unfortunately you have me. So let's start out with a really great event. Deepwater Bay Trans Green Power, let's have Colin Teague come up, we're gonna swear in the court. Where do you want to go? Right here. I, Colin Teague.
I, Colin Teague.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Deepwater Bay.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Deepwater Bay.
And will fully, impartially, oh gee, and will faithfully, impartially, and honorably perform these duties.
And will...
Faithfully, impartially, and honorably perform these duties.
And honorably perform these duties.
Congratulations, Councilor Teague.
Thank you, Senator.
Mr. Teague is Councilor, number three. He'll be serving for your term, which expires on December 31st, 2016. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so let's go ahead and, this is the pledge being to order. Perry, would you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Teague.
Here.
Fisher Brown. Sparks.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Macala. Gambino.
Here.
Grant.
Aye.
Form is established. Let's move forward and will somebody approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Thank you.
Mr. President, I recommend we approve, I move to approve the minutes of the earlier Deepwater Bay meeting of September 1st, 2015. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
It's been second and approved that the minutes from the last meeting on September 1st be approved, so any comments? If none, please call the roll.
Teague.
That's me.
Sparks.
Here.
Dambino.
What? Well, you said here, but yes.
Yeah.
Olson?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
That's all the candidates we've got for tonight. Let's go ahead and Robert, would you give us a report on the Council's panel?
Yes, I approve the Council's panel as presented.
Do I hear a second? Second. Okay, it's been approved and seconded that we go ahead and say okay to the Council's panel. Perry, call the roll.
Sparks?
Yeah.
Olson?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Teague?
That's me.
Okay. The next part is special orders. Perry, do you have anything there?
I don't have anything on the agenda.
Um, next, one comment there, we're about to move on to the public comment, and tonight we have a very long meeting, so I would like to just let everybody know before we get to the public comments that you'll have three minutes to come up and state your case, and that's it, okay? So special orders done, reports of officers, boards, and standing committees. Anybody have anything there? With none, let's move to public comment. Anybody have any public comment? Okay. Being that, we'll close the public comment. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance 303, declaring a ban of sales of recreational marijuana by medical marijuana dispensaries, and declaring an emergency. Prior to the discussion on this, I'd like to acknowledge, Perry, you just received a petition. How many, the issue on that petition?
It says at the top, 100 signatures.
Oh, no, they just got a whole bunch more.
Earlier today, there was a petition sheet submitted, so you all have a copy of that. What was just handed, submitted into the record, looking real quick, the petition sheets, the wording at the top is the same as what the wording is on the top of the copy you have, and so there is one sheet that has 24 signatures, another sheet that looks like it has about 23 signatures, another sheet has two, another sheet looks like it has 24. There's 12 on another sheet, five on another, five on another, two on another, and four on another. So, and then there is a cover letter attached, sign line, Anita, I don't know if I'm gonna pronounce it right, Kilicci?
Kilicci?
Kilicci? Maybe? Q-U-I-L-I-C.
Quilci.
No, it's Kilicci. She was working on it.
Anyway, it's a letter. You want me to read it?
Um... Sure, read the letter.
I suppose, yes.
Oh, but I just, Chair?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to ask you a question on the signatures, have they been validated in registered papers?
No. We don't have time to do that.
And I do have one other question on that. How many different collectors of the petition were there?
Mostly two, but a few people turned in very small, I gave out a few sheets and they sent them back, which is their signature.
And the two people that were the signature, the people that gathered the signature, could you just name the names?
Myself and Anita.
Yeah, okay. I see Anita, Anita, and Inlily.
Yeah.
The one you got the copy of that was submitted earlier was still in?
Oh, yeah.
Full in, yeah, it's okay, alright.
Yeah, I would be for reading.
Yeah, I'd say it's read, definitely, it's heard its sense.
Okay, it says, "For the record, at Deepwater Bay City Council meeting Tuesday, September 15th, 2015, I support local businesses and the local economy. This creates local jobs and allows families to stay together here on the Oregon coast. This business is no different than any other in our community. I spoke to many people that were here visiting, supporting our local fishing industry, restaurants, bars, and motels, et cetera. In a matter of a few hours, I gathered nearly 50 supporters. I found only two that would not sign the petition. One was because he doesn't sign anything, and the other supports Newport Recreational Sale. One from Canada changed his mind and crossed his name off. Our locals and our tourists overwhelmingly support recreational marijuana to be available here. I would imagine, based on what I have read about Colorado and Washington State, that there will be tax revenue created. Deepwater Bay could use additional money from funds/tax collected to make improvements to its infrastructure, among other things the city needs. Passing this would bring in additional visitors and locals from Lincoln City and other coastal areas that do not have recreational MJ available into our community to spend money at other businesses. Lunch, dinner, shopping, et cetera, all would benefit, it is legal. I urge you to vote yes and allow the sale of recreational marijuana in the City of Deepwater Bay. Thank you, Anita Kilicci, supported by Marion Lane, Deepwater Bay, Oregon."
Chair, Mr. President. Councilor Sparks.
May I make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to allow limited legal sales of recreational marijuana from legal licensed dispensaries as allowed in SB 460, and as, in terms of Item A under unfinished business, we should forego, or do whatever we need to do to dispense with ordinance number 303.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'd like to comment on that motion. Could you take off the last part? We just need to say if we're gonna vote for recreational marijuana.
So we don't need the last part?
Yeah, we need to repeal. Oh, yeah, we're gonna, I don't know if we, I don't think we've...
I don't think we've...
Okay, fine, but just so that we're clear, and the public is clear, according to Oregon State law, which is allow the limited sales of recreational marijuana in a medical marijuana dispensary.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Would you accept that change?
I would accept that change.
And do you have a second one?
Jerome?
Yes, I do, I'm second.
So that's been approved and seconded. Basically, what this is saying, this vote we're gonna take, is it's allow, there's the opportunity for recreational sales of marijuana to commence on October 1st, and then after that, OCC will take over sometime next year. That's what we're voting on. So I'm sorry, you wanted to say that?
Yeah, so we've certainly heard a great deal of pros. Do we have any negative comments?
I've not received any written testimony on the proposed ordinance 303 since the last meeting. Mr. Gilio did submit his statement that he read into the record, but that was at the last meeting. So this is the petition sheet you have a copy of that was submitted this afternoon, and then this, these petition sheets with the letter, is what the city has received regarding the proposed order.
The only thing I would add is, it's kind of obvious, 100, with that reading, that's 102 pros, and I recall some correspondence with the city received from some negatives. I think in total, four or five, and they were all in one place, one area. So regardless, my opinion, this is personally, regardless how I feel on the subject, I think it's plain and obvious that we need to go forward with this and approve it. And also, next, it's next Monday, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Colin.
Yeah, I just kinda wanted to chime in on this, you know, being new and reading over the League of Cities Local Regulation of Marijuana. I did read some emails that I saw in opposition, it sounds like, to the marijuana dispensary side, but what I gathered from these emails and other folks that I've talked to in the community is they're concerned for the lack of law enforcement response that, or crime or might increase because of the dispensary and/or recreational marijuana sales. Looking at the League of Cities thing here and about the tax, it seems like it's gonna be pretty significant, and also it's, correct me if I'm wrong, I read that the city can actually add an additional 3% tax on top of what the state will kick back. So I don't know if that's true, that's what I read, and I was highlighting that. I actually talked to a medical marijuana dispensary up in the city, and he confirmed that too, so the state will send us our share if we participate. And the city can actually impose an additional 3% tax at the city level. So what I, as I started processing this, I don't know if it's possible, but the revenue from the tax that the city would receive, both if we give the 3% and I think it equates to about 10%, is actually what the state will kick back to the cities, is maybe look at using those funds to contract with the law enforcement, either the county, city, for full plenipendiary. I think that'd be a good use of the funds, that seems to be a concern from other people, is the lack of law enforcement in their opposing, and so if they give a little, maybe we could give them a little too with the law enforcement, you know, scandal known. That was my thoughts with this.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think the point is well taken, and I think it may be a discussion for another time when we actually have some of that money in our hands and in account, and then we say, and then we can look at it, and I think that that's a, you know, where we...
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. I agree, I agree. At least worth the discussion. If I were to chime in, I would say, why aren't we doing that with the liquor store?
Absolutely.
I mean, that would be, that would be my analogy to it, and we know currently that our liquor store through its tax share participation rate is about $37,000 a year already, is that correct?
I don't know, I think between the direct revenue share and then the tax.
Right, so we'll see that we have a lot of people that want to smoke pot in this town that will write the same amount, we don't know that.
Right. The League of Cities says that Legislative Revenue Office has estimated the total distribution for cities in the 2015-17 biennium will be 440,000, jumping to 592 million 2017-2019. So that would be the amount that they are...
That's the state.
For the state to distribute money back to the cities. Sounds like a gold rush.
Before we go any further on the discussion, I can tell you that I conferred with the mayor about this, and I also received an email from a fellow counselor. I don't know if you all had a chance to read that, but it basically is talking, oh, I'm sorry, this is not... Did she send over about marijuana? Joe?
I only saw the email.
That's something she sent me, I thought it was in our record too. Just regard that.
Strike that.
Yes, strike that. Any more discussion? Perry, would you read the motion, please, before we vote?
I mean, look over at him, shoulder.
Or should I say ammo, would you please repeat, you want me to put it on there?
Okay. Okay, Sparks moved to allow limited legal sales of recreational marijuana from legal licensed dispensaries, and forego, neither one of us got good answers, but maybe Steve, can you read it?
Sure. I...
Do you want me to read it?
Do it again?
If you can, I mean, I'd say what we have is to allow limited legal sales of recreational marijuana in medical marijuana legally licensed facilities.
I'll just read you what I said.
Excellent.
The motion was to allow limited legal sales of recreational marijuana from legal licensed dispensaries as allowed in SB 460.
Thank you.
Is that summary two, Mr. Grant?
Yes, you have a second.
Does that have to end first?
Well, the SB 460 covers that.
Small question.
Olson?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Teague?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
That doesn't happen off their account. Good luck to you guys, best wishes, welcome to the business. By the way, there is a hearing next Monday at 6:30, and that hearing determined is instituted by five letters by concerned citizens about the medical marijuana dispensary. I encourage all of you to come to that and participate in that public hearing. Move on.
Can I say one thing to the supporters out here? I think it's important, if you support it, that you hold yourself to the highest standard of behavior at that meeting. Don't demean the process in yourselves by, if there's something that you severely disagree with, and you will, of getting too upset and emote, so to speak, so just, you'll have your turn. Okay.
Okay, moving on, our next one is Item Number, unfinished business number B, Harbor Commission Membership Qualifications, and that's what I was reading from Jerome.
Yeah, I read it, right.
Who wants to start this? Steve?
Well, I was gonna suggest that you start it by reading, since she wrote that up, she's not here.
Yeah, since I have two numbers, you know, mixed up. This is from our fellow counselor. It says, "Hi Perry, please share, this was the council for tonight's meeting. Dear Mr. Mayor and fellow city councils, on the subjects of qualification for future membership to Deepwater Bay Harbor Commission, my suggestions are as follows. Number one, that no more than two people who work for, own, or are board members or shareholders in any individual business be allowed membership. This will prevent monopolizing voting laws that could give any person or business an unfair advantage, or that could put the city at a disadvantage, such as a situation that we most recently experienced. We should be looking for diversification on this committee. Item two, that a similar restriction be implemented with regard to the direct or indirect relatives as well, in parentheses, wives, in-laws, cousins, et cetera, parentheses. I believe that we should now ask for applicants to disclose any affiliations that they have or that they know about, in parentheses, on scandal, city members. I also think that any applicant or committee member who has such an affiliation and fails to disclose it would be in direct conflict of interest, and would immediately forfeit their membership or further consideration for membership. I hope these ideas are thankful. Thank you, Councilor Joe Fisher Brown."
Mr. President, those are excellent suggestions. I wanted to add one more idea to it that I thought about a lot, and I think there's a provision for doing this anyway, Perry, and that is that we should try to have at least two commissioners that are outside of the Deepwater Bay city limits, because we have, the harbor belongs to the community as a whole, and not everybody who has an interest in the success of the harbor and how it relates to the rest of the community is within the city of Deepwater Bay. So if we could consider at least two members from outside the city limits, I think that would be really one of our...
Mr. Gambino. Interesting point, Steve, but it's a good one. I do agree in that just saying that at least two members must be, must reside outside the city, because for the same reason you state, it's important to the community and the harbor, I say, it's more important that they are members of the community. However, I think there's a way out, or a way in, to have something like that by including two sport fisher people. And those positions obviously would have to be from anywhere that uses this facility. So continuing with comments, there are seven positions on the commission.
That is correct. At present.
At present. I would suggest, and the wording isn't gonna be exact here, but two commercially affiliated entities from the harbor, so two people from the harbor that are commercially tied to the harbor. Two sport fishermen, that can be refined, I don't know if we would do that, but gorgeous sport fishing. One environmental individual, Jerome, you had mentioned something about a little bit more refined than just saying an environmental, if you're not pushing graphic person. And then one harbor, not, one Deepwater Bay business person that is not financially related to the harbor. My thought.
Mr. Grant?
Oh, I guess question one is...
I just would say, anybody in business in Deepwater Bay depends on the harbor or someone else.
No, I mean financially tied to the harbor. No, there's charter harbor.
Oh, 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 okay. I thought you meant, you know, any business out there, because we all...
Well, of course.
Yeah, sorry.
I, I'm throwing around in my mind the need for seven members. And I tell you, what the argument is in my mind is, we really only need five, okay? But if we have seven, it's hard to get seven people in the same room at the same time for our Harbor Commission meeting. So if you have, or, you know, a cor, five people in the room for our Harbor Commission meeting. So if you have a seven-member board, you might get a corum with five people there, but really, I think, for, my experience on the Harbor Commission tells me that, that what I would be looking for as a counselor, as we said on both sides of the podium, is from the Harbor Commission, is clever ideas, unique ideas, that we haven't had before with a diverse group of people. That being said, I think it's also imperative, as we approach this, that when the Harbor Commission presents an idea that they're asking us to approve, or, you know, that we give, with proper discussion, give it an up and down vote to implement those items on, that they could, we could have a liaison and set it on the agenda, and make it an action item, you know, and we could say yes or no. But that gives the, I think that gives the Harbor Commission relevancy going forward, that they're, that we're not just here to listen, we're listening, we're here to either take the action or say no, go back to the, or we can't do that in a lot of cases. So I like the idea of, I would say, at least one set of eyes that doesn't, that may be that outside the community, okay? Two, I think there's any sport fishermen, that could be a sport fisherman or not a sport fisherman, we could include one or two people from the sport fishing community, okay? And then one environmentalist, so that's one, two, three, and then no more than two from, that has direct financial ties to the, to a business in the harbor, i.e., that would include a commercial business, we've got two, basically fish plants down there, living Pacific, and the other one that does slime hails, so those would be considered also commercial businesses, harbor dependent, and as long as, as well as with the charter. So no more than two people with direct financial ties to businesses in the harbor that depend upon the, our dogs. So that's how many, that's already five?
That's already five, so...
So...
Hold on, I'll give a little Mr. Teague some, he's...
Mr. Grant, I just wondered, when we make these qualifications, you know, talking about one bar, those, one person from the harbor, and et cetera, that those positions have to be those people? I'm just wondering, I mean, it's gonna be hard to find one person from an environmental type group, and would we be shooting ourselves in the foot? Or shouldn't we say the qualifications, that should be our goal, and that be part of the screening process?
I think that, I think my experience shows, and it's a really good question, Counselor, that in other groups with other such, say, qualifications or backgrounds, required that with the lack of, with the interest in participation that we broaden that, those criteria.
Steve, I want Mr. Gambino to speak, he has a very relevant point about this from the EDC.
The Economic Development Committee, I kind of, it's been a committee that's been around long before any of us, but it's been on and off, on again, off again, and I wanted to revamp that committee, it was called Economic Business Development, it's made Economic Development Committee, and I crafted just exactly this kind of thing, requirements for consideration on the commission, and it was indeed very difficult to fulfill for that reason. Now, it ended up being difficult getting people anyway, as we know for our commissions, but, yeah, I think somehow crafting wording that says we might broaden that.
We could actually, I wanted to let Steve come here next, Steve, would you want to kick in?
What I wanted to kick in is that diversity and making it flexible as possible will really attract higher quality applicants. The applicants today may be discouraged because of the way it's set up, that they might not be able to make a difference, but if we think of this as a way of attracting the best and the most qualified candidates through diversity, I think we're gonna be a lot more successful. And I said it last time, is that our commissions are very critical to our success in this community. The stronger the commissions, the better we do. I've seen that in the six or seven months I've been sitting on City Council. So that's really my focus, is that making those commissions as strong as we can.
So maybe we craft language that doesn't limit us to fulfilling certain positions with certain representatives, but that when we do a call, we can say, we encourage, special consideration will be given to people representing, you know...
These groups.
These groups, and that we... These groups, and that we are looking for a diverse group that has fresh ideas, I guess you could say. But not to give the old ideas, I mean, look at, I mean, I sat there and we've got, I mean, people like Lars Robinson and Lauren Yonard that have a sense of history of how things got to be where they are now in harbor. And I think that's an important part of knowing what needs to be done down there. And they're down there on the docks every day. And so those kind of people that really have that sense of history, I think are really important for their work to...
Am I allowed to talk?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, I don't play mayor very often, or the person in charge. You know, I just want to go over a couple of those things. We talked about having two people from the commercial industry down in the harbor, whether they're folks at the fish plants or folks at the whale watching, or folks that actually have charter businesses. We talked about the sports fishing people being on this commission. We talked about an environmental person. We talked about two people from the outside being on this commission, unique ideas Jerome brought in. And also, more importantly, and this one has been resonating with me, I've been telling a lot of people about this, is that making the harbor commission relevant. If I look at our relationship in an introspective way from the city council position, I don't think we've been really supportive of our harbor commission, right or wrong, that's my read, that's my crossfire. But the goals, I like Colin's idea about, we set it up with goals. There's one thing that resonates with me is, is that for years and years, the harbor commission has been populated by those that have a financial interest in that harbor. And right or wrong, that's the way it's been, and it's gotten to the group we are today. And the one thing I would like to chime in more than anything else, whether it's five members or seven members, there's never a quorum given to the people that are making their living in the harbor. If they can convince the other people that aren't involved in the harbor to vote with them, that makes it more powerful, because it's not more of a, well, this is in all of our interests kind of deal. So I think if I can chime in anywhere is that Colin's idea about, these are goals. And I like Steve's idea...
Sheriff, go ahead and finish, but I've got an idea.
Okay, okay, cool. Now I lost my train of thought. In any case, I like his idea about, this is the goal, this is the mantra, so to speak. I like Steve's idea about picking people from outside. You know, remember that people that live in Lincoln Beach and people that live in Glenny, at least a couple of them, they all are basically the same rate payers that all of us in this room are. They utilize the sewer district, and so they pay fees, so they have a voice in this. One thing I also, and the last thing I'll say, is that we have in this community, our average age is 58, that's according to the Census Department. We have a brain trust here of over 1,400 individuals. I want to make sure that we tap into the smartest group of people to help us, because this is, this is not an easy thing, an easy thing to solve. And I'm not saying that we have to solve anything, but we do have to get a community of people that think collaboratively, and maybe not, but think uniquely, and maybe not, but at least they can bring something to the city council today and tomorrow that the city council and the future city councils can vote on. So Jerome, you wanted to kick in?
Oh, I guess, one clever, and there's, I don't want to open a completely different discussion, but one clever idea would be, I guess, to say, instead of saying, having assigned certain positions, you could say, no more than two people that, you know, front of the, to have direct financial interest in the harbor, no more than one person residing outside the city of Deepwater Bay, no more than, I hate to limit the environmental community because, but everybody's an environmentalist, so let's just say, we're all conservationists. So let's leave that out. And then leave the rest and encourage, so just mainly we could just say, no more than... What I'm seeing, to bolster what's been happening in the harbor, it's not just the fact that the commission has been dominated by people with direct financial interest in the harbor, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. However, they were from opposing groups and they would, and there was an active war against these two businesses. And so they could agree on very few things, except something that benefited them both.
We have to fix that. Mr. Gambino?
I really like that idea, because as long as what Colin said, it's difficult to fill these things. So instead of saying, we need two O D F's, we say, we're not going to take more than two O D F's. And that might help a little bit. I would say that if we do that with commercial entities, financially tied to the harbor, that we should also do the same number of business persons that are not tied financially tied to harbor. In other words, if we say we can't have more than two charter operators, then we can't have more than two curio shop owners as well. Does that sound viable?
I appreciate where you're going, Counselor. Sorry.
No.
That is, in the spirit of not limiting our pool of choices, I'm thinking maybe we should, at this point, I'm thinking only of two limits is, those individuals with direct financial ties to the harbor, and those people that reside outside the city limits.
That'd be two and one, which is common.
Yeah. And then in our wording, special consideration will be given to, you know...
Business owners.
Business owners, sports fishermen, some environmental community, yeah.
I like it, but I'm going to call him the first in your next.
What would council think of adding one more position to maybe, maybe we could seek out even another community that has a harbor, maybe Port Toledo, Port of Newport, somebody that's actually salary professional doing that, that would want to volunteer on that type of commission, bring some of their experience from a larger port, two people maybe. I don't know if that'd be a conflict of interest with them, but that's kind of thinking out of the fox for getting some of that professional...
What, he's on to something. Because a lot, some commissions have advisors, they're non-voting advisors, but you could have, you can have an advisor or two that might be, have an interest in doing that because of the outreach that we have and the scope of what we do in the Deepwater Bay harbor affects a lot of people. And that kind of reminds me of what I wanted to say about having a seven-member, that a seven-member harbor commission might not be a bad way to continue because of the scope of what we have to do down there and the need to have a brain trust just for the harbor and having an advisor or two that might want to come in and help us out from other harbors because we are connected. There's a lot of outreach involved. I like that idea, a non-voting advisor.
Actually, first, I think for us, the first thing we should, before we proceed, is, are we thinking five or seven members? I think we should decide that, because that will help clarify what we're going to say about the dozen positions, you can't do this, or you can't do this, or something.
I was just going to say, if we're looking for diversity, seven members. I mean, it's two more members, but it's two more members of the diverse group that we're going to act from.
Seven members would like a warrant, in my mind, over five versus seven. If we, if only five shows up, then that's still a quorum.
Still a quorum.
Right. Right. Do you have six?
We could have a split quorum.
Yeah.
But you could, on that occasion.
So are we all being agreed on, we're only doing seven?
Yes.
Okay. And so I like your idea, Jerome, about saying no more than two people have financial ties to the harbor, I like it. Four or three, two or three, that's it, we're going to have seven. But the only problem is, if you have five, then you have a quorum of three. So I would tend to agree with two people that are financially tied. And I definitely do want some people from outside of Deepwater Bay. I know some really great people that probably will get involved, because they're involved in the harbor, Lincoln Beach. Not saying I have to go on a sales guy, no, there's some interest out there.
No, and no more than two, yeah.
No more than two people that have a commercial, direct tie. Should we say more in charge?
No, no, I'm going ahead to what you said, just there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No more than two, and that person could be somebody that represented the sport community. Maybe they're, they didn't import them, maybe they're a leader of one of the groups there that want, that this harbor is important to the sport community, there's no doubt.
Actually, current chair of the committee is a sports fisherman. He happens to live in town, but he is a sports fisherman, he's the chair. So, yeah, that's fine. So we're two members that are tied to the harbor financially, does that mean more in charge? No, we can't say that because we're, we also have the folks over at the whale watching dock and the plant owners, so just a commercial, two commercial operators out of the harbor. And no more than two professionals from outside that community, outside our own community, Deepwater Bay, but they could be sports fishermen, we'll give considerations for that. Is that a two and two?
Yeah.
And then what would you throw the rest of the winter?
Well, you said one environmentalist.
You know, I'm worried about that, because I've already contacted that crowd, I'm supposed to get word back there pretty quick, but there aren't that many people that are actually quote environmentalists, we're all conservationists, like Jerome says, or however you want it, but to be actually an environmentalist, you know...
Well, we have NOAA down in Newport.
What's that?
NOAA down in Newport, yeah. They're cool people there, that, I mean, NOAA's who are millet's.
They're military.
They're military.
Okay, hold on a second, Steve, I have a good suggestion. Does anybody have a suggestion out there about the environmental crowd for us?
Would that not include fishing wildlife people?
Sure. Could, you know, I'd be down for it, could they participate though?
I don't know.
We'll find out, we'll find, well, we...
They could be an advisor.
Sir, I don't know your name.
My name's Philip Lannigan.
Oh, Phil, please.
Family's been in there over 100 years in the area, and we're a lifelong commercial fisherman, and first three boats in the bay, we practically built this town, half of us are Indians, and we've been here for hundreds of years. And fish and game people, there is people with a stake, right? If we get somebody with a fishing game involved, well, they're environmentalists, you know? They have a, even the Hatfield Marine Science Center, they have biologists, so that's all.
Thank you. So you like that idea?
Yeah.
I think we have somebody in mind for it.
Well, we shouldn't, we shouldn't give her a job, she's not here to refuse it tonight. So we were, originally we were talking about requiring or having certain requirements. Now what we're doing appropriately is, is instead doing just the opposite, saying no more than a certain thing. So certainly it would be great to have somebody O D F and W, probably from all kinds of other things, like vote, bill, budget, things like that, but as we want to be careful to limit, right now, I think we should get back to that, right now we're saying no more than two financially tied to the harbor, no more than two out of town, out of city, whatever types.
Four out of city, that must be what I had.
Yeah, so that's two out of, I mean, that's four out of seven, so that leaves three.
So we're still saying not more than one kind of restriction?
I would say, you know, going forward, I think we could, I'm wondering if we could put special consideration, you know, or we want to encourage, will be given to members of the environmental community that want to participate in the harbor commission. And there's a lot of private organizations, private nonprofits out there, there's our oceans, there's the numerous, you know, the numerous, too numerous to mention and too numerous for me to think of one.
Okay, would we be safe, sorry, would we be safe to have limitations on more than four of its seats and leave three with no limitations? Would that be all right? I, you know, members that would roll the...
I think we would. It's just giving a broader pool. Now, if we talk about anybody from the O D F and W, again, if that person resides outside the city limits, then it fulfills one of those.
Okay.
We want to keep it...
Steve, before, can I ask Curry a question about that? Do you know of any limitations that state workers would have to become involved in something like this?
They may exist, but we have to confirm that. That may be...
My experience has been that is twofold, that I have seen seats on boards that I was on, in particular the Development Fishers Board, where there was, I think there was one voting member that was actually an O D F deputy staff, and the rest of the members were ex-officio, which meant they weren't non-voting.
Steve, you're next.
Okay. One of the things that I think about since I've been here, and I, there are two commissions that we have, Parks and Recreation and the Planning Commission, and all I see is two commissions that are really empowered, the SAM and Enhancement Committee, Commission is that way too. So we want to be able to do this so that we have a harbor commission that's empowered, and that they're able to go back and build their own programs and goals and take ownership for it, so that they can come here like some of the other commissions and really participate and make a contribution, so that we are not the ones expected to make, to do it, that we have an empowered commission as the goal.
I agree. So I'm just framing it a little bit, we've decided that two people will not, no more than two people from the food down there, no more than two people outside of the, possibly we'll give one to an environmental, possibly not, then we'll have two other outlarger seats. Is that, is that crazy, right?
I think with attracting, attempting to attract several of them, Jerome mentioned it was environmentalists, I think it was, well, they fish a lot, like, or fish, or fishing graphic, I don't know.
Well, you have the, also down there the Hatfield Marine, you got the Oregon State University biologist students out of there.
That's right.
Students, by the way.
Exactly. There's nothing wrong with getting the higher education community involved.
You know, I've been also thinking a little bit on this, on how do we attract people to come? You know, because we have a little stigma right now with the commission, and also there's witness animosity with the city council and the commission, so how do we attract people to come help us? Because I see this as a puzzle. I see a board in front of us, and there's this piece, and there's that piece, and there's all these little pieces, and right now they're all shuffled all over the board, and they're not coming together. I see as putting out, so to speak, a hall of arms, and this is something we can develop as we get a little firm in this, but let's make a case for why you want to help Deepwater figure out how to manage its harbor for the next century. And I don't know what it is when you talk about, we have to make it an attractive thing. Any thoughts there?
Well, I think it's called marketing, I think it's called recruiting, and I think that we need to build some kind of document that looks like a call to action or a recruiting document that outlines the challenges and the goals of the harbor in a broad sense, and that we're looking for passionate folks with complementary skill sets to come in and contribute, making it look like an opportunity...
To come solve.
To come solve problems.
Barry, does our webpage have the ability to have a link to a video?
Yes.
Our $5,000 local TV is predominantly on fishing and water and harbor.
Enset video, is that the Enset video you're talking about? The Enset video.
No, I think Robert's talking about the one that the city council...
Oh, the other one.
Now, the Enset, is that online right now?
Near Shore Action Team. I don't know if there's videos of it. I've looked for some.
Anyway, I wonder if we could, you know, post a marketing type thing on the webpage with a link to that. I think very well done video.
That's on the front page.
Huh?
There is a link to the video on the front page.
We need to get people excited.
Hold on, I want Peggy, could you tell me a little, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Could you tell me a little bit, or tell us a little bit more about that Enset video?
Near Shore Action Team.
I know what that is.
Yeah, they have a video talking about the harbor and what's really done in regards to the places where you can't fish.
The reserve.
The reserves, yeah. Yeah, it was done in regards to that and how important fishing is to the community. That's where I think I want to take a look at that.
And where can we find, where does that reside?
City Hall, probably.
Oh, is it?
Do you have any Enset videos?
He's talking about the one that Draxman did.
I don't know. It's the Enset video, it's all in. I think I have one.
It's consistent with that.
But I have a suggestion, I have a suggestion for your, your call for volunteers. You might start with an apology for the city council's council conglomerate collectively, lack of attention to the planning commission in the past few years.
Party person.
Or the harbor commission.
If somebody listens to that.
For the harbor commission. If you start out with a mea culpa, you get their attention. And if you say, we screwed up, we want to do better, here's what we're asking. You know, the level with the people, because everybody knows it. So if you come out and say it, I screwed up, I want to make it better, help with you.
Right, right. Thank you for that.
That's good.
I'm on that page already, so. So where do we proceed from here? That's, Curry wants to kick in, please.
What you're talking about is amending ordinance.
Yes.
You're going to need to amend your harbor ordinance. So that's that ordinance proceeding.
Yeah.
So if I might, it sounds like you've identified the changes you would like to make to the membership requirements that are identified in the existing ordinance. So if I might summarize, because what staff will need is clear direction on what words to put in the amending ordinance to bring back to you for your adoption. This is what I have. We'll leave the membership at seven, so that won't change. Okay. So it would read, the commission shall consist of seven members to be appointed by the city council. Not more than two of whom may be non-residents of the city of Depot Bay. Not more than two may be business persons commercially and financially tied to the harbor. Special consideration to, will be given to persons, well, you can say applicants, persons in the Depot Bay business community, environmentalist community, or those that have special expertise or experience with harbor operations. That's what I've jotted down in your discussion, so. Am I close?
I think it's excellent when you get to special consideration. Read that part again.
Okay, special consideration will be given to applicants from the Depot Bay business community, environmentalist community, or those that have special expertise or experience with harbor operations.
I wonder if we should add.
Well, I'm just wondering, as I hear that, if I was looking to be on that position, I would think that, well, if I'm a member of, outside of that special consideration, maybe I wouldn't want to apply because special consideration is being given to that position. Maybe we can say special consideration for three positions, you know, or outside of the other ones. That way maybe it attracts somebody that might be put off by that thinking that, well, if I don't have special, you know, if I don't have that experience, but I'm a local business owner and they're looking for this, why would I apply? Because that's what I'm looking for. Maybe specify that it's for that particular.
Three of the officials.
Right. And you see?
Let's see, Jerome, you're next. Oh, I'm sorry, Robert.
No, no.
Okay.
Oh, I appreciate that. You're, you're, you take counsel. I think Curry's wording is, is pretty good. If we could come up with something simple, it goes to, it goes to the fact that we're never going to have a perfect wording on this to encourage all, we could put, but we encourage, or not but, we encourage anybody with an interest in, to apply.
Sure.
Okay. To cover all our bases and iterate it down, somebody's still going to feel like they're left out. And I think to cover the people that we want to be part of this, I think that Curry encapsulated it pretty well.
It's, it, Mr. President.
Without putting into codified language.
I agree with Jerome. It's in the promotional document that we put together that's recruiting.
I have an idea.
Did you have an idea?
I have an idea.
Okay, because there's two things. We're working on the ordinance and then there's the promotional document.
Right, and so I would say, I was just going to go there. I would say we separate the two because there is the PR issue. And I don't want to call it a problem, it's a PR issue. And then we have the ordinance process. So I'd suggest somebody make the motion to follow with Curry's reading of an ordinance, of a revision of an ordinance. And we go ahead and start that process. Because we can come back the next meeting, or the next meeting after that and revise matters if we need to. And then a separate motion would be that we work towards a PR angle of this. And that wouldn't even happen tonight, that'll happen in our next meeting after our discussion. That's one.
We'll have time to think about it and we would, I would suggest that we get input like from Peggy or others who have some, probably some good ideas for us to consider.
Robert.
Mr. President, I would that we adopt a change in the ordinance number two ninety-two, section two point zero one zero, membership, to add to the existing language, not more than two members of the commission may be financially, how do you word that?
Direct, directly. Because, you know, you get so far out.
Yeah, directly financially affiliated with the harbor. Not more than two people from outside Depot Bay, the city of Depot Bay. And then what you said about the special consideration.
Colin.
Were we going to add something to, for having some type of advisory? Does that need to be included into that?
I, we have, you're, he's absolutely right. That's a part of order. We need a second.
Before we can.
Before we can have that discussion. I'm trying, is there, is there a second on that?
So I, point, point of order clarification. So your motion is to basically send Curry to the woodshed and by next meeting, have, have your motion in language that we can vote on passing and adopting? Is that?
Or discussing it.
Yeah. Okay, well, then I'll second that.
All right, Colin, you're, you're.
Since that went out of order. You were out of order. Did we want to add?
About the advisory.
About having one or two advisory positions?
No.
If we can fill them great, if not.
I was thinking about that in respect of Jack Brown. I was. And Jack, for, for those that don't know, Jack helped us get neighbors for kids on the way here. And then Jack came off the board and then the board named him as an emeritus physician for a year or was it two? I forget, so we go back to Jack.
Forever. If you're an emeritus, that's it.
And, you know, I, I know a couple of people that I could see.
Emeritus, that is such a good idea if.
Well, a talented idea.
Well, yeah, and, and that, that honors folks who have contributed in the past.
And also it allows that, it allows those that have come before in the harbor to have a voice with.
Exactly.
Current city members. So Colin, you're absolutely right. I think we should maybe.
Two emeritus, having, having been on a board that was consisted of five people that are voting members, but there was at times even, I think, twelve members. And that, that the other, the other seven were ex officio. In other words, they were there to participate in, in, in all the discussions and conversations. But when it came to vote on, on, on an item, only the board group. And those were called ex officio members. They, they were members like, of different, diverse communities like we discussed, even members. And they can, then they can free, that frees advisors to be from, from.
From.
Yeah, votes in harbors. And so we could appoint, I mean, we, if we could find them, two ex officio members.
How about we put in there that up to two ex officio? I really like the term emeritus. The reason being, it's like Esquire. It's like a lawyer who's retired, Esquire. So I like emeritus. It's the same thing as ex officio, it just doesn't work as that.
And I, I should say that Jack and Maggie or Brown are still very active in neighbors for kids from a distance. And they are, they continue to contribute. So that's a good, a good way to go.
Did, did I understand that would be a lifetime membership?
Well, an emeritus physician is a lifetime membership.
If they choose to execute it as they want. And I don't have a problem with that because we have a wealth of talent and information down on harbor. And I can just see them saying, well, hey, you know, if we can't vote, let's go at least provide information and background for what has happened before. I really.
It's an honor.
It's an honor.
To be emeritus, yeah.
Well, we have to sell that, too. That's the other question.
That's the DR.
So is it, is it okay if, if we were to amend that to up to, you would want to call them ex officio as well?
I think ex officio is less limiting or intimidating than emeritus.
Okay.
We're emeritus, kind of puts it out.
Okay, all right.
Because they think of it as.
So who made the motion?
I did.
And, and it took the second. Can we include that in that? You both have to agree. Up to two non-voting members can be appointed.
Right, and we can figure out what we want, what.
Make up those.
Well, what title would want to give those two advisory members?
Yeah, give them a call, the advisory members?
Yeah. We could call them, they're a member. I guess that's.
Absolutely. Can you say that? Give them Vincent's card.
You want to pay with Vincent's? So when that did, so.
I, I, I'm friendly to that amendment.
And Curry, now I will ask you to read that, or read instead, which is really topical. But let's, let's get this thing going along.
I do have a question. So the, I'll call it, the two ex officio non-voting members is in addition to.
Yes.
Emeritus.
The seven.
I'm sorry, is that?
Yes. Ex officio.
So, okay, well, Emma's got it. Thank you, Mel.
All right, no.
Robert moved to adopt the change in ordinance two ninety-two, section two point oh one oh, membership to add to the existing language, not more than two members of the commission may be directly financially affiliated with the harbor. Not more than two people from outside Depot Bay city limits. And what Curry said, not special consideration, but an amendment to add up to two non-voting advisory members could be appointed in addition to the seven.
Okay, so any more comments on that? It's removed in second and called a.
Yambino.
Yes.
Grant.
Right.
Teen.
Yes.
Sparks.
Aye.
Olsen.
Yes.
Would you like this to be drafted, to present to you at your very next meeting?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, we need to get moving on this.
And then also I would like to direct the staff to, Curry, you and I can talk about this with the mayor, but start talking about the PR components, let's see the marketing of it. Let's see if we have space in our next agenda, because I know we are full with several other items coming up. So that's to be deserved. Very good, excellent. Let's move on then. A sad note, we have, our attorney, David Gordon, has taken very ill. And that illness has taken him away from his abilities to perform his duties as the city attorney. Now, David Gordon was working with Holen and Odorke, law firm out of Newport. He was an associate member of that firm. Mr. Gordon also, before that, was a member of a firm known as Dinger Diaz.
Wilson Pearson.
Wilson Pearson. Right, it was a real long group of guys. And Mr. Gordon has, he's done an excellent job for the city. It's sad to see this happen. However, he has, from his inability to perform, he's longed for Curry and Curry's asked him questions. And Curry has come up with an interim course for us, and I'd like you to talk about that, Curry, please.
If I might, there's, there's a couple of things. Last meeting I reported that I made contact with other cities about the possibility of borrowing their in-house attorneys. And we did hear back from the city Newport. And, and they're willing, they would like to be supported. Actually, they are supportive and they understand the problem, but they have a variety of concerns about their attorney's workload and other things. So that's not a resource. At the last council meeting here, I was asked if I had talked to the attorney that is the attorney for the city of Waltpour. And I had not. Since that last meeting, I have, is Mr. Pete Gittner. And he is both able and willing to help the city out, actually by providing legal services on an interim basis until Mr. Gordon can come back.
Great, yeah.
It would be a contract if the council's amenable to that. We could draft up a legal services agreement and work on it. That's really all I have to agree with.
You know, I, hold on, just before we make a motion, we need an attorney. We have issues that we, as the city council and Curry, can't determine. That's not what we're experts at. I don't think we're experts to this either, but we try. Mr. Gittner comes highly recommended by Mr. Gordon. Other than that, I feel comfortable on an interim basis. And the only thing is, do we need to define interim? That would be my only question this whole thing before we make a motion. Well, I think we, I think we do because we have an existing non-terminated contract with.
Right.
Right. So, yeah, we have to say it's interim. Is it, I know we have to say it's interim, but do we put a time limit on that interim? For instance, and I, I don't want this to be the case, but Mr. Gordon is in firm for longer than, say, four months. What do we do? Do we revisit the issue then and decide, or do we just set a time limit of six months? I don't know, I don't know how we should proceed. I want to be, I want to be as effective as possible on this.
I, Mr. Gittner was the city attorney here. At least he was, as I remember, nine years ago.
Right.
And. I, you know, I. I, I, what kind of pool of candidates might we generate? I know that the city needs an attorney. I'm just saying, are we limiting ourselves to one person that we might be able to do better than Mr. Gittner? Or maybe, I don't mean to put it that way.
I understand.
I mean, I, I'm just thinking of being able to interview more than one candidate. And I guess I would ask, did Mr. Gittner leave here under a shadow or? Or did he resign? Or, I don't know if that's, we can talk about that in public or.
Do we want to talk about all this in public?
I have no idea.
No, I, I would say, Curry certainly could comment. Well, Mr. Gittner was also partners with Rick Diaz. And so if we're going to get into it, we're going to get into it. This is why I wondered if we should just say, hey, listen, we're going to, this is a very generous offer. We're in a spot. Maybe we take it for four months or five months or so. Whatever we take it for. And then if things haven't resolved themselves, Mr. Gordon, then we are ready to go out to advertise for an attorney.
Well, if, yeah, Mr. Gordon, do you have any kind of time?
Well, he just did. Three months is what I. Well, he, he just did the one, three months is what I.
Yeah, I don't know. We can't really talk about.
Was it three months?
We can't really talk about it because of.
Oh, I see.
That, that we can't talk about. So do we say three months and we review it in three months then? I, I have no problem with that.
Gittner first.
Do you want to?
Yeah, three months.
Somebody make a motion for this. Yes, yes. Yeah, so, um, would somebody care to make a motion on that for three months?
I'll make that motion, that we, uh, retain the services of, uh, now, he's, is, is Mr. Gittner, he's a, he's not a member of a firm right now. He's an individual. Okay, so, um, then, uh, I make a motion that we retain the services of McPherson, uh, Gittner and Diaz for, uh, interim for three months.
One month is in September, so that's October, so it's first of the year.
We could just, we could specify that the first day.
I wanted to say the first year. Because he indicated he wanted to do it just on an interim basis, correct?
Right.
Is there a second on that motion? Any more discussion, Colin?
Um, would we put in the, the contract that if our current attorney was to come back sooner than that, that, that contract would be over? And we would just go back to our, or do we, or is it just a three-month contract?
If I might, our legal services agreements, there, there's, um, I, I guess I'll use the terminology there at will. There's never a finite timeframe on them in my experience here. And we've had agreement services with quite a number of friends over the years. But the, the services agreement is, the format has been the same. There's no finite time period. Um, it can be ended at any time.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would say, um, just before the vote comes up, that we should, uh, kind of get a bead on this, uh, the first meeting in December of this year. Just thinking forward, because if, uh, we're going to move past using or, uh, entertaining Mr. Gittner's generous offer, we need to be prepared to move past that. That's just the thought. So any other comments? Paul, roll with this.
Grant.
Right.
Teen.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Gambino.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to do business. And the first item, our counselor signs. And then Miss Wyatt left, uh, she left behind, uh, some certain items that she, uh, took care of us for us. One is the Cascades West Commission on Transportation, C, CWA.
CWA.
Thank you, CWA. And that would be an alternate representative. Robert, you're other representative of that. There's another one who's a safety committee representative. Now, they meet once a month, right, right in the.
Yeah.
And that person, uh.
I see where you're going.
That person would attend those meetings once a month and, uh, listen to our staff and interact with our staff on safety issues. And the third one is the, uh, uh, Deco Bay TSP Community Advisory Committee member. It's, uh, Cat. Okay, and who's that wife? That was Cathy, was it?
Both, both, uh, Mayor Mattle, uh, and Cathy were, uh, R.
Were R, yes. R, Mayor Mattle still works, so. Okay, so, uh, Colin, uh, what can't you do? Uh, really good. You shouldn't have come tonight. We've made it easy on you. Um, uh, are you willing to take any of that?
You know, I, I, I'd like the safety committee. I think that'd be fun, you know, to be able to interact with the city.
Yeah, Togo, uh, Carla, Togo, myself, um, are pretty much make up the safety committee for the room and the side.
I may add, if I could, um, I think the office should be on safety committee at TSP, because in, what, three years' time, I'm only missing one CWA meeting or so. So it's not as important. I'm not for that.
What is the, the, the TSP Community Advisory Committee? What, what is that?
Transportation and Transportation Plan. Curry.
The city is underway with updating and upgrading its, its adopted transportation system plan. We first adopted it back in two thousand and one. So the entire process involves, um, a community advisory committee that's made up of planning commissioners. We have two, had two city counselors, um, traffic safety commissioners and residents. So that committee's primary job is to review the draft memorandums that are coming from the consultant on all the aspects of our plan that are being updated. And to also act as the community's liaison. So you talk to people out there in your neighborhood or out, you know, in, in Deco Bay about the transportation system plan and ideas. And you bring that to those meetings if they can't make it, you know, they're, um, the advisory committee meetings are public, but we also have open houses. So the process is winding down. We hopefully will be finished with it by early of two thousand and sixteen, uh, or maybe by the end of the year. So there, there's going to be at least one or maybe two more advisory committee meetings before it comes to the council. So that's what that is. Like I say, it's kind of winding down. You'd be coming in at kind of the eleventh hour, but we have lots of books.
Go ahead. Here, Mr. Olson, if you need somebody for the safety committee and the.
I'll tell you what, I'll make you a deal. I'll, uh, I'll back Robert up on the CWA, because I probably should get one of those things.
Done.
And then we'll, and you'll take dinner, too?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, so you were hearing this too about John?
And I'm going to be advising dates, times and locations.
Yeah, no, we're not going to pop it up and, uh, just surprise you. Um, next on the list, Lincoln County Sheriff Office wants to, um, uh, not pay the deposit for their meeting of the police and sheriffs and all that at the community center. Robert, uh, Mr. President, I move that we allow, uh, Lincoln County sheriffs to not, or we give a waiver to Lincoln County Sheriff's, uh, office. So that they do not have to go through all the regular, going through their payroll and such to be able to check their own dollars. It's only going to be given back.
Do I have one first second?
Yeah, there you go.
Can I say that?
Yeah, and for Pete's sake, guys, it's the sheriff's. Uh, any question about this?
I have one.
Curry.
I did, I'm going to ask. Um, is this for this one time? So if they want to come back?
I, I.
Do you want to add them to the, um.
Free DGS, yeah, free DGS.
The, the way the, the no deposit required list. We, we have.
List, so they still paid to that list also?
Well, now, there, there, we have a, we have a no fee, a, a free, we have a no fee list. And then we have a no deposit list. And right now, the no deposit list is basically, um, the federal government and the state government because of the same issues that you brought forward.
I think.
Do you want to add?
I think we'd be.
Do you want to add county offices to any of the?
Well, it's Charles, no.
Well, I mean, they pay the fee, the county, they pay the fee, but what they're asking for is not to have to pay the deposit because of the steps you have to go through to claim it. So, right, I'm asking, that's not what they asked for. I'm just asking, do you want your motion to just be this one time so they would come back again the next time?
How often I do this?
Oh, maybe once a year.
Let's, let's just make it more than a comeback to a motion.
Okay.
Just a little bit forward. Hold up, please.
All right. Teen.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Olson.
Yeah.
Gambino.
Yes.
Grant.
Right. All right, there's one, one comment. I just got a chance to do their discussion in a second. Is that, this also is a community meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, for, for the community at large.
What are they talking about?
Town.
There's private Deco Bay. The next one's items. Deco Bay Chamber of Commerce requests a scheduled event in the City Park Community Picnic this Saturday at, what time?
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock.
So, um, you know, you're all aware, you know, with the cancellation of the Saturday. So, uh, the chamber feels that, you know, it's a good thing for us to have a nice little picnic in the park, um, no charge. Because we feel that there is going to be a lot of people in town that are going to come to this Saturday and they're not going to, you know, we're not going to have one. And we thought, you know, it'd be nice to just have something for them to come to. And then they, you know, hopefully they'll see that, you know, we did put our best foot forward, you know, tried to alleviate the situation. Um, you know, because we put advertising out there, you know, to help people. We're still getting calls asking about the Saturday. So. Well, we have, we're planning on a hundred people. And if we get more than a hundred people, we have stores in both directions that we can sell somebody to. We are well prepared for that. We have been going out to and reaching out to businesses and we have gotten a lot of support, um, from businesses as far as getting, you know, food donated, so.
We're going to play music. I was looking at humusacala.
Yes, radius.
Yeah, humusacala.
Yeah, we'll do that. And Michael's, uh, tentatively, uh, said yes, so.
Yeah.
And then, uh, we also have, um, another, well, personally, Martin Hall is going to come and after the parade, and like I said, he's going to come down and do a twenty-minute presentation. He's going to be the mermaid. That's all I know. Martin Hall is a mermaid.
From Top High.
Oh. Yeah, I was just going to ask if there was any kind of, uh, entertainment going to be provided for any kind of kiddos or the family to help attract them.
Of course, there's a teacher.
I don't know.
Really? Yes, well, okay.
East Coast part of beer busts, you know, when they got canceled and.
Another part of, or the part of?
Someone you want to, Robert? Uh, Mr. President, I move that we, um, accept a request for, uh, Chamber of Commerce to schedule an event, City Park, yeah, Community Picnic, September nineteenth. Second? And who's that?
Oh, second.
There we go. Discussion?
Discussion?
Yeah, Talk Like a Pirate. That's international Talk Like a Pirate.
Well, that's why you have to come, because we are inviting all of you guys to the house.
You could come up with a.
We still need.
Coming weekend.
Long-term. And great, great.
From twelve to six.
Well, well, the picnic itself, we're going to do, um, because the Saturday started at ten, but we thought that was a little bit early. So we, we figured we'd eleven o'clock. If anybody comes earlier, we'll still feed them. I think I'm, um, eleven to four, because we figured the Saturday was ten to four. Um, so that's what they would be planning on. But we need, you know, still need people to come and help. I mean.
Depending on when I sleep, I get, we may just go.
Well, I hope so, because I think that'd be fun, because we are looking still for ways that the community can come and be a part of it, you know? Like, like getting Martin to come and do a presentation and, you know, Michael to do the music and, you know, and we even suggested that, you know, even if a couple of other musicians showed up, we could have a little jam session. Um, if you want to maybe get some pirate buddies together, come on down and do pirating.
They're a little boring.
But you know what I mean? That's what we're looking for.
Yeah, I, I can make a request to our music department at Neighbors for Kids. And Ally Jackson might be able to conjure up something that maybe she and the kids can go out and sing the, the kids' own song or something like that.
You know, so that's.
We have a kids' own song.
I did have those.
Yes, we do.
We're basically putting the name down around the night.
I'll, I'll take that, I'll take that back to see if we can, you know, uh, make something happen in there, too.
It wasn't so much a question, it was just maybe a recommendation that there is something there to attract us, you know? And I think of bringing my kiddo down to come and enjoy the barbecue. Am I just coming for a free lunch? Or am I going to come down for some type of entertainment, fun? And, and someone that's going to keep me around a little bit longer than to kind of get a hot dog and leave.
Right. Like I said, we're still working on.
Sure, yeah, no, I get that.
Martin coming, who's going to.
Short time.
Being the newest, newest member of this committee, they, they have a lot of cleanup to do.
You're actually a part of the community.
And we have still got gamers going out for different, different things. Um, but if anybody, if you could think of something that would be fun for the kids to do, bring your ideas to, to us. And, you know, we try to get it set up. You know, it's at the park, so they have the playground equipment. We're going to have music, um.
That's a good idea.
I think my neighbor, um, he shows up at events and he ties the.
Blue.
Blue.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, it'd be something.
Harry.
Harry?
Harry.
Yeah.
I think Harry would be.
Harry would be fun to kind of invite people to the.
We could, we could.
Yeah, a kid's band there with.
Silver.
Humusacala was, uh.
But we just thought it would be fun for the whole community, just kind of pay down, just needed fun.
Yeah.
Because we don't know what to expect. We don't know how many people are going to show up, you know? We could get a lot of people showing up expecting the Saturday. We could get ten. So we, we're preparing for a hundred. And like I said, if we need more, you know, there's stores, we need a direction that somebody can run to and get some more food.
So, uh, guys, get moved and seconded. Uh, that's called the vote. Curry, could you call the vote first?
Sparks.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Gambino.
Yes.
Grant.
Right?
Yes.
Um, I'm just a, a question. Um, I understand that, um, there are might be some.
Doing this, uh, I'm just.
Yes, we have some openings on the board.
And it just goes a quarter. We had success.
Because that's always a danger.
Not that I, I don't know. I haven't heard anything, so.
So you were on the board before, isn't that correct?
I am on the board. My term was actually up in July. And I'm still on the board for right now.
Okay, right, that, that's all I wanted to ask, which is that, thanks, Beatrice. Good luck on Saturday with all those law.
Well, we hope so.
Yeah.
Thank you, too.
We hope so. Well, thanks, guys.
Okay.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, uh, item D, uh, host lead ordinance cities, small cities, region number one, Corley Bean, or number six, we're going to push that until Mayor Mattle is here to explain to somebody his vision on that.
Yeah.
And so, uh, that brings us to the correspondence, Curry.
Two items of correspondence, and one of them was just pretty well-covered, uh, by Beatrice. You have an email from the Deco Bay Chamber of Commerce announcing a whole thing, which was just a clue, a picnic on Saturday, September nineteenth. And they're saying, we're seeking volunteers to help set up, cook, meet, greet visitors, serve and clean up at City Park, eight AM to six PM. So that's. To cook, tama, meat and bread. I said, I said to cook meat. Uh, the second item is a, it's from the Oregon Association Chiefs of Police. And I had a phone call a few weeks ago, um, I think it was a government call, asking if the city would consider contributing to their association. And I asked him to please submit something ready for the council's consideration. So that's what you have.
Could I suggest that we wait for Mayor Mattle on this one? Because he's been a big supporter of these kind of activities. Is that okay with them?
I'd like to make one comment on this, is that. I get, during the process, the process of, of any given day in my office, I get a number of calls. Uh, some of them are asking for contributions. And, uh, so, and, uh, I've been solicited by the, uh, by, by representative of the Oregon Chiefs of Police. And, uh, so my question always, are you, are you a member of the Oregon Chiefs of Police? And, uh, so that our, any donation we give, uh, to the, uh, to the organization chiefs of police via you, is it, how much is actually going to that organization? And I think we should, uh, find out, you know, who's a member of that organization. And the last time I was solicited, um, I think the answer was no and about twenty percent, okay? So I'm very suspicious, uh, and it could be an absolute, not a total scam, but I don't know, you know, who this fundraiser is. If it's a private, you know, uh, fund, uh, fundraiser, uh, slowly enjoying it and found a new way to collect money through via the cities at, uh, doing this very thing. Or if this is going directly to the chiefs of police and who represents that organization.
We could ask the staff, one, I, uh, I'll just come on the same thing. I've had, uh, over the years, a number of times, the firefighters association come ask for the same thing, which is very little good with firefighters. Curry, could you look into the providence of this?
There should be some due diligence.
Yeah. Yeah, I hear that's a good point, Julie. It's absolutely, and let's push that till the next meeting, real quick. Any more comments, Curry?
That's it.
Okay, next one. Ready, you're up.
Yes. First off, we've, um, been kind of in a water crisis that recently I proved out a significant water leak over here on Canton Coast Street. Um, had been going on for a long time. It was up to.
long time, it was up to forty gallons a minute, equals fifty-seven thousand gallons per day, and for a month is one million, seven hundred and twenty thousand gallons of water going in the ocean, so maybe that's why we had some, some high tides. So, that's been fixed, so we, we did an audit, we have a totalizer tank in the north, north tank, and, uh, down to zero to five gallons of loss at night, so it's fantastic, it's something we really needed, and.
Well, that's how you determined it was leaking, because it was at bay?
Well, we knew we had a leak, we just couldn't, yeah, at night, uh, the, the flows really taper off, and then the, the flow meter allocates still the water going through, so, you know, we got five gallons of water at two A.M. or three A.M., that's, uh, pretty, pretty good type system.